Meetings adjourned. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2015. Would you please join Councilman Pizzillo in the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, please provide the wisdom to us on this dais to make good decisions that will improve the quality of lives of our various stakeholders. I also ask that you protect all of our men in uniform, men and women in uniform, working to keep us safe, along with safe passage home for all in attendance. Amen.
Thank you, Joe. As you look around the dais, you see Councilman Cabot is not here this evening, so could I please have a motion and a second to excuse her? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Councilman Stip. Excuse me, and a second by Vice Mayor Lortano. Shall we vote on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Why does this start? Okay, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on a non-agend item. Is there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak that's not on a non-agend item? All right, then let's go on. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.5 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approve the final plat for Pebble Creek Phase II, Unit 55A, subdividing 14.58 acres into 86 single-family lots and five tracts generally located at the northeast corner of State Freeway 303 and McDowell Road within the Pebble Creek Phase II planned area development, subject to the stipulations set forth in the general notes of the final plat and additional stipulations. Item 6.2, approve the final plat for Pebble Creek Phase II, Unit 55B, subdividing 12.24 acres into 48 single-family lots and five tracts generally located at the northeast corner of State Freeway 303 and McDowell Road within the Pebble Creek Phase II planned area development, subject to the stipulations set forth in the general notes of the final plat and additional stipulations. Item 6.3, adopt resolution number 15-5732, approving and adopting the City of Goodyear Title VI Implementation Plan. Item 6.4, approve an operating agreement between the City of Goodyear and Cantomea for the delivery of reclaimed water from the Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility. Item 6.5, Number One, approve a replat of Lot 4 of the replat of Palm Valley Phase VI, Perimeter West final plat approved on October 3rd, 2011, and Lot 6 of the minor land division map of a replat of Palm Valley Phase VI perimeter west lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, approved on October 22nd, 2013, and a portion of north 169th Avenue right away as abandoned by accompanying resolution consolidating 37.73 acres into one lot generally located on the south side of Montecito Avenue between Cotton Lane on the west and the Loop 303 on the east, subject to stipulations. Number Two, adopt resolution number 15-1733, conditionally abandoning a portion of north 169th Avenue and the related public utility easement to and accepted by the city in the Palm Valley Phase VI perimeter west final plat approved by the Goodyear City Council on December 4th, 2006. Number Three, adopt resolution number 15-1734, conditionally authorizing the relinquishment of any interest in the drainage easement and the temporary drainage easement depicted in the Palm Valley Phase VI perimeter west final plat approved by the Goodyear City Council on December 4th, 2006.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor.
And which one is that?
6.1 and 6.2.
So are you saying you want a presentation?
I would like separate voting.
Separate, okay, all right. Then should we like a motion, please, for 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion by Councilman Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
All right, so we're going to go to 6.1 and 6.2. So a presentation or questions? Where are you?
No questions, just separate vote. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to be voting on 6.1 and 6.2. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was that you? Councilman Pizzillo will read the motion and second is Councilman Holman. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Nay.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 5-1.
All right, thank you. Let's go to the business. The first item on business is the reappointments to the Arts and Culture Commission. City Clerk Maureen Scott will present. And as you see, we have a couple of them, and we're going to bring them up separately. And she's going to do, are you doing the oath separately as that we decide on each of these segments of the committees, even though they're on the same committee? Okay?
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. The item before you is to consider the reappointments to the Arts and Culture Commission. And the three members that are being reappointed were just recently appointed this past June, and they were fulfilling vacancies that occurred due to three members resigning last spring. And so all three terms that they were filling expired this month. So the council subcommittee is recommending that these three members be reappointed for a three-year term expiring December 8th, excuse me, December 31st, 2018. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Does anyone in the audience would like to speak? All right, then could I have a motion, a second, to reappoint, and if I mispronounce these, please forgive me, Laura Keno, Rex Lambert, and Rose Marie Putman to the Arts and Culture Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2018? Motion, please?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne and a second from Councilman Lortano. I didn't ask for a council discussion. Was there anything before we take this vote? All right, so well now we take the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. So you're going to administer the oath of loyalty at this time to those individuals?
Come on up. All right, I need you to raise your right hand and please repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Laura Keno.
Rose Marie Putman.
Rex Lambert.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of Arts and Culture Commissioner
Of Arts and Culture Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any comment from the council on this appointment? Yes, Councilman Lortano? Vice Mayor Lortano?
I just want to thank you before they walk out. Wait, wait, wait. Thank you. You're losing. Come back, come back!
No, no. Council wants to show their appreciation to you, so, Vice Mayor?
I'll just start it. I just want to say thank you very much. That's a really great committee, and it adds so much to our city, so thank you for serving.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Again, I just echo it, and I've said this time and time again, I truly believe it. What makes this community great, and I mean truly great, is people stepping up in the community, volunteering their time to give back to the community. And again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much.
Aye, Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Thanks for stepping up. We really appreciate it.
Councilman Stip?
Yeah, what more can we say? The strength of our community really is everybody, so thank you really for committing your time.
Councilman Holman?
Well, I too want to thank you for the time you spend working so hard for our cities, and it's great to see those wonderful smiles on your face, and to see you excited about continuing to make our arts program as good as we can make it. Thank you very much.
And as a mayor and very connected to that committee, I thank you very much in all the work and all the wonderful displays and your work with the mayor's art, you know, commission with the students, and I really appreciate all you do, so thank you very much. Now you can go. All right, 7.2, to consider the appointments and reappointments of the Board of Adjustment. City Clerk Maureen Wilber will present.
Mayor and council, the next item is to consider the appointments and reappointments to the Board of Adjustment. And we currently have all five positions that are currently expiring, and two of the members that are currently on the board have reapplied, and that's Estelle Beswick and Nancy Burton. And there are also three new members on the board for consideration, and that's Robert Garcia, Thomas Neath, and Jerry Schroeder. Mr. Garcia and Ms. Burton are not able to make it tonight, but the council subcommittee has recommended all five of these to the Board of Adjustment, and that concludes my presentation.
So, just so you know, we're handling them just separate, so we'll do the first one, and the two, the adjustments are expiring, and then we'll go on to the next one, do a separate vote, okay? So could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Holman made a motion, and Councilman Osborne is second. Open for council discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. And let's go on to the second one. Could I have a motion, a second, to re, a second to appoint Robert Garcia, Thomas Neath, Jerry Schroeder to the Board of Adjustment for the three-year terms, which will expire on October 31st, 2018, or until their successors are appointed and qualified? Any discussion?
So moved.
All right, so the motion is from Councilman Holman, and second
Second.
is Vice Mayor Lortano. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. The city clerk will now administer the oath.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Estelle Beswick.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona
The state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of Board Adjustment member
Board Adjustment member.
According to my best of ability
According to my best of ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Stay here for a minute, I might say something.
So before you rush out, let council make their comments, so who would like to comment? Councilman Stip?
You know, the, I think the same thing applies, obviously, to you guys. Board of Injustice doesn't meet that often, but when you do, it's very, very important, so appreciate the commitment you make to the city and help keeping us move forward. Thank you. We have such a great community. It's absolutely my pleasure, something.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Again, thank you for stepping up. Really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
And I again also want to thank you, because it's really great when we see people that want to come and serve, so thank you all.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you for being involved, and it's been, you know, a pleasure also being part of the subcommittee that gets to interview guys and to speak to you one-on-one and kind of, you know, get to know a little bit about you, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Holman?
Thank you. Again, you know, as a person that's been working with volunteers for the last 30 years, I really appreciate people who step to the table, follow through, and become a part of the organization of our city that makes the wheels work. You're very important, and I certainly thank you, and you're doing it with a smile. I thank you for that as well.
Well, and as the mayor, the reason we do this, and I know somebody put away, oh, we just, the time it takes, you know, why are you doing this? Well, we want to make sure before you walk out that door, we do appreciate your volunteering for this position, and so that's why we do take the time to have each councilperson express their feelings about this. So once again, thank you so much. All right, we're at 7.3, to consider a job creation agreement for Sub-Zero. Harry Paxek, Economic Development Project Manager, Ron Jones, Sub-Zero Plant Manager. Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's my privilege tonight to bring before you this job creation agreement, and as you mentioned, Ron Jones is the plant manager here with the, with Sub-Zero here in Goodyear, and also I think he has operate, or responsibilities for the operations and whole Phoenix Valley is here, as well as Laura McKenzie, project managers. We're very fortunate to have them here tonight. As you're aware, recently, Sub-Zero announced their plans to expand their existing facility at the PV 303 industrial park. After an extensive evaluation of local options, or location options, I should say, because they have several operations across the country, and we're very fortunate that it's coming here to Goodyear. The expansion includes 248,000 additional square feet onto the existing building located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and West Montecito Avenue. There is an existing cul-de-sac there, which we'll show you aerial here in a minute that shows where that cul-de-sac and a portion of the building will take a portion of that cul-de-sac out. And I want to thank our engineering and our community development departments for all the work they have done in a very short timeline to get the work that you already approved for the abandonment, beginning the work of the abandonment of 169th Avenue, which facilitates this construction of this facility, which was key, I know, in attracting these jobs to this community, this expansion. So Sub-Zero in request, the support of the city, they request an expedited process, and certainly our engineering and our community development department's done that in the work they've done so far, and also support for the expansion of the foreign trade zone, which they're in the foreign trade zone now, so supportive and activated, activate, increase the activation of their actual FTZ, and then of course fee waivers or reimbursements for the expedited portion of plan review fees. So the city issued an offer letter proposing support for their expansion and for the activated FTZ site, and up to 250,000 in the expedited portion of plan review fees. So you can see this aerial here where their current building is located, and then just to the east of their current facility, 169th Avenue, that cul-de-sac street there, it's not often that we take out streets for expansion, in fact, doesn't happen very often, but in this case, it certainly is a, is a great opportunity for the city. So there's a lot of work that's associated with that, so they'll be expanding that building all the way to the east. Here's a east, right there up against the 303, so that's about the 248,000 square feet that moves this building to approximately 700,000 square feet. So certainly the largest manufacturing facility in Goodyear, and probably one of the largest in the West Valley, which we're very proud of. You can see the portion of the street in which it will, will take over, and just the northern portion of the drive will be there in the future for accessing the parking. So the agreement is to operate the Goodyear facility for continuous, continuously for a minimum period of five years, hire at least 100 employees at the Goodyear facility within 36 months, and of course obtain a certificate of occupancy, maintain an annual average of 100 employees at the Goodyear facility beginning the third year of this agreement, and then invest at least $34 million in acquiring the property, the construction of the expansion, and the equipment that will be installed in the new portion of the building. So Sub-Zero is responsible for paying the standard permit and plan review fees, but the expedited portion that pertains to this expansion will be waived or reimbursed, depending on when those permits came in, and should you approve this agreement tonight. And assist and support the activation of the user-driven foreign trade zone site, so that we are actually asking for your support, support that. And then that really is up to them to get activated, and then of course to pay the fees that are associated with that to the Greater Maricopa Foreign Trade Zone, as well as the Foreign Trade Zone Board for that. Sub-Zero's expansion in Goodyear will have significant economic impact, including of course the increased property taxes, tax revenues from the construction sales tax, tax revenues from the equipment that they'll install in the facility, and then employees, vendors, and service providers. Also, there's a significant annual economic impact, and there's a little error there in the PowerPoint there, that $119,498,634 in total economic output says over five years, that really is an annual number, once they get to 100 employees, and so I've understated that, really you would multiply that by five is what that economic output would be over a five-year period of time, once they achieve 100 employees. So Sub-Zero anticipates that over the course of the three years, its operations should provide at least 100 new jobs with an average compensation, including fringe benefits of $63,008. And we're very fortunate to have them here with this expansion. One of the great things about this, if you look at that corridor, the Loop 303 corridor, with the businesses that we have there now, and the one that's under construction in this expansion, we'll have twice the manufacturing jobs, and we'll have distribution or e-commerce jobs, and so we're very happy about that and the great jobs that they create. So that's our presentation. Any questions you have? And I'm sure Ron, I think, has a presentation he'd like to make as well.
Mr. Jones, one? Ron, did you want to speak before us? Did you?
If I can.
Yes, please do.
Mayor Lord, city council, and staff, I want to echo a couple of things that Harry mentioned. One is, we had great support with the city staff getting to this point. It seems like every time we come to the City of Goodyear with a request, it's we want to hurry and do this. I don't know if it's bad planning on our part, or if business is that good, but one way or the other, the city really stepped up and helped get us to where we needed to be. Last time we came before here was 2010. We bought the building, started moving folks in in 2011, and said we'd add 100 jobs. We far exceeded that in the four years. We are at capacity. I know several of you have toured the facility, and you can attest to that. And what we bought the building for was to put in some new product lines. Those new lines have taken off. They've done extremely well. It's actually the, it produces more than the other half of the facility now with the new production lines. So what we want to do with the new expansion is double our fabrication capabilities, our storage capabilities, and then also add a new product line again. So the ultimate goal of this expansion is to get to doubling our capabilities and hopefully be geared for growth like Goodyear, so. But want to also highlight, a lot of the work behind the scenes on everything here is with Laura McKenzie. She's our project manager, all the engineering drawings and all the working with the construction, and the go-between with the city is with Laura, so she's kind of the brains between, for the project, and helping make this all happen, so.
Well, thank you very much. All right, so let's go ahead. Will the city clerk please read resolution? Oh, is there anybody would like to speak that's in the audience tonight? Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 15-1737 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 15-1737, approving, authorizing, and directing the city manager to execute a job creation agreement for Sub-Zero Incorporated, authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of resolution and agreement, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Vice Mayor Lortano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
First of all, welcome, and I'm really pleased to hear that your working relationship with our city is gone very smooth. The question I have is for staff when it comes to the expedited reviews. Is most of that being done in-house?
My understanding, it's all being done in-house.
All in-house, okay. Other quick, and it's, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Second question's more of a technical nature. I took a look at the economic impact, and it's using 3.5% for the construction sales tax. My suggestion, and correct me if I'm wrong, it should probably be 2.5, because 1% is, what do you call, we can't use, it's got to be used for specific, it's flagged. So when you do those, you know, I would suggest, because only 2.5 of it we can use for anything, so in the future, when she breaks out those economic models, I would only use 2. My understanding, she used 3.5. So 2.5 is probably what we should use. Any?
That's correct. We used 3.5.
Is that a fair, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think the methodology and understanding was, although 1% is dedicated to other, that's still an impact, but I understand. All the impact fees.
Is there a way, though, we could just differentiate that, so you have, you have a feel of both, rather than, because then you're going to look at other cities and what they're doing, and everybody's going to say, well, why aren't you? So, or, or they do less than the other city. If I, I think it would be fair to put the number out, but explain that. Is that, is that workable?
Yes, Mayor and council, 3.5% is revenue coming in, but we'll look at how we can differentiate that
Right.
And perhaps break it out separately in future economic impact analyses.
I appreciate that.
But we do want to keep the full 3.5%. It's just back to Councilmember Pizzillo's point, that 1% of that has to be for development impact fees
Specifically, yes.
And only 2, specifically.
Yeah.
2.5% can be used for one-time council discretion, so, but we'll see if we can do that in future reports.
Yeah, my only concern down the road, if that becomes part of a piece, and one, it's separated, so that we know what can, what is eligible and what is not eligible. That's the reason for it. That's what kind of drive, drove my eye to it when I saw the 3.5, you know, in that one lump, so I would appreciate splitting it out. Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Osborne?
Just to follow up to Councilmember Pizzillo's question, I had also the expedition, which is fine, but just making sure that on staff, we're prepared, because I know we have a few projects that we've also stated the same thing, and so I don't know if we've hit that threshold of needing extra people or not, so, so I do appreciate that. My other question was, just clarification on, on the incentives on page three of the slides, you actually have waivers/reimbursments. What's the reimbursements? Can you follow up on that?
Sure. Yes, and Mayor and Councilmember Osborne, the reason why we write those agreements like that is because sometimes permits may come in pertaining to the expansion before it's actually, foreign agreements actually presented to you and approved. In that instance, if that happens, then we would be reimbursing, we would be charging them the full fee, the expedited portion of that in addition to the regular fee, and then should you approve the agreement, then we would reimburse them that portion of the expedited fee.
I see, okay. Well, thank you, and Mr. Jones, and Sub-Zero, and the great company. We really appreciate your continued expansion in our city, and it's an outstanding partnership that we have, and I'm very excited. Thank you very much.
Councilman Stip?
Yeah, I want to echo that as well. We, was there at the groundbreak? Matter of fact, that was the very first, when you basically cut the ribbon and we had the tour. Great facility, excited that you continue to expand, and that you guys chose to expand[1722.12] I'm excited that you continue to expand and that you guys chose to expand here as well. So look forward to many years of community partnership. Thank you.
And I also want to thank you. We see each other often on different, I tour it quite often with the different people when Ron calls and asks me to do that, and it's always a pleasure and I always learn something each time I go. So again, and I get to meet your staff, you've got a great group of people, Lauren, you do very well. Smile when he compliments you, because it's true. I was watching your face and you were kind of like, no, no, no. Yes, yes, yes. Take those. It's good. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Laura Tonell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Well, once again, congratulations on the expansion. It says a lot for your company and clap on this one. This is a good one for us. All right, we're going to go to 7.4, which is a public hearing to consider a special use permit to allow the C3 church to locate within the existing Palm Valley crossings in our zone PAD. So I'm going to open the public meeting. Planner Alex Lithensky will present.
Thank you, mayor, council. Good evening. C3 church is going into Palm Valley Crossings planned area development. The building is already existing, they're just going into one of the vacant rooms. The uses permitted in the planned area development are a mixture of automotive-related commercial uses, service commerce and modified C2, as well as neighborhood commercial. As I noted in the staff report, it complies with all criteria required for special use permit approval. It's in conformance with the general plan. The service hours differ from the other businesses in the center and traffic and parking should not be an issue. There also is a fairly large separation from residents to the site, so a buffering is required as far as traffic goes. And since the building already exists there, it would only be a tenant improvement. Staff has not received any comments or concerns. And on November 18th, Planning and Zoning Commission approved the recommendation 6-0.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, with the, excuse me, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the request for a special use permit, excuse me, to allow a church used within the existing Palm Valley Crossing Center's zone PAD subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Laura Tonell and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Yes, Councilman Pizzillo.
I just had one general question. I was reading through the material and there was something about a roll-up door that there was some concerns about, and I wasn't quite sure where it was kind of going. Can you just kind of further explain that to me?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, the center does have the roll-up doors on the internal side of the building. They're used, I think there's some automotive uses so cars can pull in. At this site, we did require the stipulation, so if there was a lot of noise, they would have to keep the door closed, not to disturb any of the adjacent properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's, yes, Councilman Stip.
Alex, in the staff report, we talk about there being no plans for daycare classes or outside meetings or outside activities. Excuse me. But I'm not seeing a, I don't know if a stipulation is the right, the right word for that, but I don't want to put us in a position that we said today, we're not going to do this, but there are not plans is not very, it's not a very strong position for us later on down the road. And we're going to deal with this issue, I think, in January regarding another church who didn't have plans, who now has plans. So how do we prevent that from becoming an issue in the future? On this issue, not the other one, but on this one.
Thank you, mayor, Councilmember Stip. The, if anything were to expand, it would have to go through the public hearing process as well again. Since it's not on its own property, we don't foresee it being any real expansion since they can't make any changes to the existing site plan.
But if they added a daycare, is that by code, a change that would require a change to the special use permit?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay. Good enough, thanks.
So I guess that's our protection then?
Well, on this particular issue.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, let's go to 7.5, is a public hearing to consider, here it is, a special use permit to allow the installation of a Horizon wireless communication facility near the southeast intersection of Yuma Road and Cotton Lane. So we're going to open the public meeting. Oh, Alex, you're presenting again.
Back again. Thank you. The special use permit that I'm presenting now is for a new Verizon wireless facilities, or, excuse me, wireless communications facility on the Romans Oasis property at Yuma and Cotton Lane. The site is zoned agricultural urban and any new wireless facilities require a special use permit. The, the proposed height of the tower is 35 feet. There are existing poles on the site that are brown and they're 30 feet, so this one doesn't differ from the existing poles very much. And it will be painted brown to match the existing poles. This is a photo simulation that they provided, what's already out there versus what can come. Any, it's currently located roughly 67 feet from existing public utility easements and right-of-way. And any future right-of-way expansion, since it is a, excuse me, any future expansion would be at least 25 feet from right-of-way. We did receive one phone call from a resident who was concerned about the appearance of the corner, but I did explain to her that the pole was existing and it wouldn't be a typical metal pole. And so once I told her that, she seemed satisfied with an answer or with the answer and was okay to move forward. On November 18th, Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval 6-0 and all public hearing requirements have been satisfied.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I please have a motion and a second to approve a special use to allow the installation of a proposed Verizon wireless communication facility to include a 35-foot-tall pole and support equipment on the property located at 16825 West Yuma Road, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo? I mean, Councilman Pizzillo? Is that right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Alex, do you have the, do you have the site plan?
Thank you.
That you could put up on Elmo? Otherwise, I'll just be pointing to my iPad and that'll be kind of hard for you to see.
Sure.
And while you're pulling that out, I need to apologize for not getting this to you earlier. I was peppering the city manager all weekend with questions and this one fell off my radar until we came forward. But it's fairly simple. This section of Yuma Road, east of this location, is, I think, four lanes, two in each direction plus a median, correct? And when it gets to this location, it turns to one lane westbound.
Yes.
Is the, you talked about easements and I just want to make sure that Yuma is going to only be four lanes in both, two in each direction, is that?
Yes, I believe Yuma Road is a scenic arterial is what I was trying to say earlier. So that will be four lanes. Yes.
Okay. So the easement that you talked about earlier, when that second lane is added, this is not going to have to be moved again, is that correct?
No. Or, yes, that is correct.
Yeah. You almost got me on that one. Okay, and just out of curiosity, I thought at one point, we had, we had a design standard that talked about the Verizon, or not, excuse me, cell towers had to be decorative, the palm or the pine tree or whatever, and obviously those don't fit here. Do we have that? I mean, was I, am I mistaken? And why does that not apply to this, if it is in fact true?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Stip. The zoning ordinance requires that it blends in with the environment. Since this was a shorter pole and it did blend in with existing poles on the site, we decided that it was fine to move forward with.
But that's not what the future of this pole is going to, that's not, that neighborhood is not going to look like this, presumably in the future. Right?
Yes.
So is there a, are we out of, are we out of options to push for decorative at this point?
For the monopalm? We did ask the applicant to try to conform with the monopalm design. I think their reasoning behind it was to emphasize the service toward the target supercenter and the shorter pole didn't fit better rather than having to do all the work with the monopalm. And the applicant is here, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
I'd really like to hear the answer to that question.
Sure.
I realize what the, I realize what the corner looks like now, but that's not what the future of that corner is going to look like, and I'm pretty sure that antenna is going to be there much longer than.
Yeah, probably correct. Hello, mayor and council members. So what Verizon's trying to do with this facility is get direct coverage to that target shopping center. And the reason we didn't go ahead and move forward with the monopalm facility is because we're not doing a 12 antenna array, we're not doing the big full communication facility. And in order to get those facilities, the heights are usually about 55 feet to 60 feet. So since we're doing 35 feet and we're going to be directly across from the facility, we're just trying to shoot over the jacking box, get to the target shopping center and then all the future expansions going on beyond that. So that's why we decided to go 35 foot and then match all the wood poles. It's going to be a core 10 pole, so it's going to look like the basic utility poles they have all around in Goodyear. I noticed you guys have the big and power lines, stuff like that are all core 10 poles as well. So that's why we went with that design, because it's going to blend in as well as all the other poles in the area.
So is there anything then in this special use permit that would allow them to put up a 55-foot pole in the future without having to come back? Or when, if we need to, can we make the change? If they say, five years from now, we need to put a big pole in, can we make it a monopole at that point?
The stipulations and the code right now requires that either 10% or 10 feet can be expanded at a future point. Otherwise, it would have to rebuild as a monopalm or something more sufficient to our design.
Okay, so we're good up to 45 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Council, Vice Mayor.
I guess Bill covered, Councilman Stip covered a lot of my questions too, because I was kind of concerned, because I thought we did kind of have that standard unless we're co-locating on something that's already there. So, and then you just said that Yuma's a scenic arterial, so I guess I do kind of find that a little, you know, little confusing there. My question is about the equipment. I didn't notice and I might have missed it. Is there going to be walling around the equipment? And what is that going to look like?
It's going to be a CMU wall with a woodslat gate in the front to allow us access into the facility, but it's going to be like the existing walls on the property as well. I guess you can't really see because it's kind of dark, but it's back right behind this little bush right here, right back there. There's a CMU wall with a woodslat gate right there. It's just going to be the basic wall painted to match the existing wall that's further down on the property, closer to where the Romans Oasis restaurant is. It's going to be the same wall.
And actually, is that on her property? On the Oasis property?
Is the?
The pole?
The pole, yes.
I just wanted to know. I think you noted in it that she had no concerns at all over, I asked that earlier today, whether how she felt about it, and she had no objections.
And that my question was about the equipment's going to be covered.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not going to be able to see that from the street or anything.
Any other questions? Councilman Osborne?
I think a good point was brought up because, you know, we're used to seeing the monopoles. And, you know, I do understand the 35 feet, but I, you know, we do have, the east side is residential or future residential. And so I think that those are the things we have to think of for the future, and especially if there's any residential connection, then you want it to blend in. And so I think the monopole, I almost, I almost am at the point of, at 35 feet, I can understand the utility of it and where it's based. I don't know if it's a concern of this council to say, you know what, if you decide you need to go to 45 feet and that's even five years from now, there may be a change in that residential area, and I think we would feel differently about it. So I almost feel like the stipulations would be, at any point that you decide this pole needs to be larger for you, that we would revisit it. I'm okay with it today, but I think future, I would care about that, I really do, for our residents. So that's kind of my feeling about it. I don't know how anybody else is or if you'd like to address it, sir, I'd appreciate that.
The reason that Verizon is trying to go forward with these small cell facilities is so we don't have to be putting those big arrays around Yuma, putting monopoles or that kind of stuff. We can actually get capacity coverage with these smaller facilities, only two antennas, so it's not the big 12 antennas, big arrays or anything, and get the coverage we need to offload those other sectors on those bigger arrays and still provide coverage and the provided coverage in the areas we need to that are, that right now have a gap. So that's what we're trying to do, is just provide a gap in coverage. We're also doing it down in Phoenix in the downtown area, same kind of thing on the street light poles, just basically utility to try to get them going through.
So future need, you don't?
They won't need to expand it going up higher.
I see.
They, I mean, they could, depending on, like you said, the residential, if they do in five years, but as of right now, the point of our small cell facilities is to provide the gap in coverage without making aesthetic impacts, without a monopole.
Any other questions?
I have one more quick question.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
And no one, my understanding, there's not going to be any co-location at this point? Or not, it's not possible? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming forth. All right, 7.6, I just, you know, we advertised the public hearing to consider rezoning Hudson Commons Planned Area Development, and that had been canceled. And this matter has been continued to the January 11th, 2016 regular meeting, just so you're aware of that. So let's go down to 7.7. A business item is going to be on a public hearing, so I'm going to call a public hearing to the amendment to the LC-Dro final PAD. Open public hearing. Planner Steve Caretti will present.
Thank you, mayor, council. This is a PAD amendment to the LC-Dro final PAD. That PAD was approved in 2007, and this is the location right here. This is Cotton Lane, Lower Buckeye Road, Citrus Road. The main part of the PAD is this area here outlined in red, and right here is parcel 1A and parcel 1D. Surrounding LC-Dro, we have existing residential to the west, planned residential to the northwest. To the north, we have a proposed high school site here. LC-Dro crosses the street portion here, and then around here, we have industrial development. This area right here is area owned by Flood Control, also by the City of Goodyear, reservation for the future Loop 303 along here, the east side of LC-Dro. In the PAD, we have parcel 1A here, parcel 1D. They are designated LDR 2 in the PAD. That permits a lot size of 55 feet wide by 115 deep. Side setbacks are five feet on one side and 10 feet on the other. The purpose of this request tonight is to modify those side setbacks for these two parcels. So it'll be five feet on both sides. The applicant states the reduced width will allow them to enhance the product proposed on the site. They would get five extra feet for that width, and that would allow them to do different garage orientations, especially the side entry garages. It would allow them to do more emphasis on the front entries, front porches and courtyards to provide more livable area in front of the garage area. The applicant also states they're finding their market is looking for larger home The applicant also states they're finding their market is looking for larger homes on smaller lots with less yard maintenance. Staff provided public notice for this PAD amendment in accordance with our requirements. To date, we have not received any inquiries on this project. We do find the request is consistent with the property's neighborhoods land use as designated in the general plan. We do find the request is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval of this application, subject to the six stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and will the city clerk please read ordinance 15-1327 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 15-1327, amending the LC DRO final planned area development as amended to modify the side setbacks for parcels 1A and 1D, generally located south of Lower Buckeye Road and east of Citrus Road, from five feet and 10 feet to five feet and five feet, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Could I have a motion a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Loortano and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Councilman Vazillo?
Steve, just a general question. As you shrink the lines, and you have, what, five feet between property lines on both sides, any concern from a safety standpoint? The only reason why I say that is if there's a problem on the one side, it's really easy to jump across to the other house, only because they're so close together. And I'm trying to envision it, since we don't have a product in front of you to take a look at, what that may look like. It would be a bunch of very small homes in a row, looking very similar. You know, it's hard for me to picture when I get there, but my biggest concern is the five foot, you know, on that line. It's awful close. And just to get back to Councilmember Osborne's comments earlier when we were discussing the light pole, you know, we have certain, I guess, standards. We look at it from the standpoint of the City of Goodyear, whether it's the lights, whether it's our maintenance, whether it's even the rock that we so choose in our right-of-way. And kinda concerned about this five foot between houses on the property lines. Any concern at all raised as you guys looked at this?
Mayor, council members, the main code issue that we looked at right of way was any fire code issues, any building code issues. It is five feet from the property line, so that is acceptable for a fire code, building code. Where we might run into an issue is any eaves that encroach closer than that five feet. And we've been working with applicants to let them know that anything that encroaches within a five feet would have to be fire rated. So that's a stipulation that you've seen in the staff report. So that's the main issue that we want the applicant to be aware of. If you do shrink the side yards, you do come into, that does come into play. In regards to what it would look like, what we, what I would probably look at too as a good comparison is Pebble Creek uses the five and five on both sides. And what we're looking at is with this amendment, the applicant has let us know that by going to smaller side yards, he could do more in the front of the house, which would enhance the streetscape. What we would be looking at is that five feet allowing larger porches, a larger emphasis on the front entry. So while you are getting closer to the sides, you enhance the front of the house. And the applicant has said that the home builders, by getting that five feet, does allow them to provide more enhancements to the project. It's not just all garage door. You get that five feet now, you can add a little more architectural embellishment to the product.
You can see where my concern would be as you get closer, you know, to that line. But the stipulation, they have to, anything that encroaches on that, what did you say, had to be fire?
Fire rated, yes, sir.
Yeah, I would love to see a picture of that. I just, and I know Pebble Creek uses them, but still, you know, I look at our standards and some of the quality, and without seeing what they're planning on building, it's really kinda hard. I wonder if they're gonna take advantage of that five to just probably put the quality so they can, you know, market-wise or whatever the case may be, because now they can squeeze them in a little tighter. So, yeah, I wish there was something to look at to see if that was their intention to put porches or something else that will dress that home up, other than just trying to put more homes in an area, you know, to try to squeeze more on the land. So it's hard for me to envision it when I look at it and I think of that, that five foot, you know, in between the lot there without seeing some type of product. So, but I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Councilman Stip?
Steve, you, you mentioned that we allow the five and five in areas of Pebble Creek. Where, are we talking about the Eagles Nest side or in the new Tuscany side that we're allowed, that we've allowed the five and five?
Mayor, council members, basically all Pebble Creek, all both phases. When they were initially entitled, it was a five foot and five foot. But definitely all of the stuff on the Tuscany side is a five foot and five foot.
Okay, is there anywhere else in the city besides?
Well, the rental, the rental.
Yeah, those are rentals.
Yeah, that one.
Mayor, council members, if memory serves me, I think Cantomea also employs the smaller setbacks. Portions of Australia have gone to a six and a six on each side. So those are the ones that come to mind first.
Okay, what is that area, kind of a different subject, what is that area directly west of the project? Is that in the city or the county? You talked about the residential area directly to the west. Is that county or is that city?
Mayor, council members, this area all in here, this is Las Briesas here, so this is city. This is the project, Levinson Project here, this is also in the city.
Okay, and what are the setbacks there?
Those setbacks are five feet and 10 feet.
So they're the standard?
For the conventional single family, yes, sir.
Okay. Has anything been built in LC DRO yet?
Not in the residential side, no, sir.
No, okay. And then I asked for information earlier, and I think Christopher's ready to answer these. What are the lot size dimensions of some of our more popular, well-selling areas of the community?
Mayor, Councilperson Stip?
Mayor, Councilperson Stip, is that better?
That's better.
Yes, sir, we did receive your question and inquiry, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to get into that and do some research for you to provide you some good answers. In the Cantomea area that Steve referred to, there's a variety of different lot sizes. They range from the smallest of approximately 4,900 square feet on up to nearly 13,000 square feet in Cantomea, so there's quite a big disparity there.
What's that size wide? What is that, that like 40 by 50, 50 by 100?
Yes, sir, it's like 47, and then I believe it's like 70, 70 or 75 if I recall correctly.
It's the small end?
It's the 75, 70, 75 is the larger end, and then the 47 is the smaller end, if I recall correctly, off the top of my head. The, so there's quite a big disparity. However, I will tell you that in reviewing the final plats earlier this morning, that the most frequent lot size is in the 7,000 to 9,000 square foot. That seemed to be the most common lot size that they had indicated on their subdivision plats, which is, if you wanna correlate that, the width is approximately 60.
Okay, and what about the Palm Valley 9?
Palm Valley 9 has three different lot sizes, and for your council's recollection, Palm Valley 9 is just north of Camelback Road, just south of Luke Air Force Base. That was, goes from 70 by 130, which is 9,100 square feet. And they offer that size as well as an 80 by 135, which is 10,800 square feet. And they also offer a 60 by 125, which is 7,500 square feet. So they have three types in Palm Valley 9.
Perfect. So the lot widths that we're talking about with the five by five now are what for this, for this project?
For LC DRO? 55?
If we go with five by five, it'll be 55, is that correct?
So the lot width is already set?
Already set.
It's already set. We're just allowing the greater width of the home. The lots aren't proposed to change.
Okay, so the reason for the questions, and I really appreciate you guys doing the research on that, is both of those areas, and the other one was the Montecito was the third one.
Yes, sir.
Which is just north of, just north of, you turned off.
I'm good at that, I'm sorry. The Montecito area of EMR, off of Calistoga and so forth, where their new Presidio is being built, a variety of different lot sizes there as well. The most common type, most prevalent, was 52 by 104, which is 54, roughly 5,400 square feet, and then also some 47, 47 by 105, which is right about 5,000 square feet, and then a very healthy range of 60s, 60 feet wide. So they have a variety of different sizes there as well.
Okay, thanks. Reason that I asked is, we had, there was a comment made in one of the documents, and I think it was the staff report, that talked about the applicant's concern about the market. And these three particular areas are very, very popular in our community, and we're selling a lot of homes in there, particularly Palm Valley 9. Palm Valley 9, which is, which backs right up to Luke, which is right off of Camelback, seems to have no trouble selling homes, and their lots are 60, 80, or 60, 70, and 80 feet wide. Here, we have a project that hasn't even broken ground yet, and we're already being asked to reduce our standard. I'm concerned that we're gonna put a smaller standard into an area that right, that abuts it, that will be different. Now, I realize it's separated by Citrus, so there's a natural buffer there. But I'm not sure that diminishing our standard is the answer to get to market when we haven't even, we don't even know whether the market even exists for this particular area. I'm very concerned about that. There's been no attempt to try to get anything done, and we're already claiming that the market isn't gonna support it, when we clearly know that the market supports both the small and the large lot. So I'm very, very concerned about, about that particular issue as we move forward.
We're gonna have the gentleman to speak about it, but just before, just, I'm gonna interject in this, because I'm always last, and so by the time it gets to me, it's like everything's been discussed, but people will want choice, they want flexibility, and the market does call for it right now, and then in other areas in Arizona where they're starting to do that. And so I think that when you say there's no market for it, I think that is, we need, if we're gonna make, we need a statement, I mean, we need to find that out, but what I've been hearing from the builders is that this is, people are looking for smaller homes, more of a lock and leave, and as far as the fire goes, it's very similar to a condo. When you buy a condo, it's a double-wall fire prevention. So essentially, this is like a condo, you could say, but it has more space between those walls, the neighbors. So I don't have any issue with the fire at all. I think this is, I think what we want is a good-looking home. We don't want just, just anything thrown up there, but I see the public wants smaller homes. They don't want the responsibility, and there is a whole group, if we wanna continue to attract the young, the young people and the older that don't want that responsibility, this is just another way to do that. I agree with, I want it to look nice, but I, I think it's a market issue. Why don't we let the gentleman come up and speak? Would you like to?
I'd like to respond when you're done.
Yeah, would you like, to me?
Yeah, to that.
You wanna respond, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying no, and I agree, and I've heard the same things about what does the market actually want, but we don't even know what these homes are gonna look like. So for me to even be, to be remotely comfortable with this, I wanna see what, what are we proposing for product? Because what was approved back in 2007 or '06 initially, I think has been, was replanted again later in '13? Steve, is that, did this not, was this not initially done in like '07 and then brought back again in '10, '11, '12?
Mayor, Commissioners, yes, LC DRO has had, with its entitlement in 2007, we have brought forth plats. They've expired. The applicant has revised certain aspects of the plats with the flood control channel. So you have seen plats come before you, and you will again in the future, as development does move to this area, you will see them come forward. But yes, you have seen applications before you.
So we're not sitting on an old product here that was initially done in '07 and hasn't been touched. I mean, we've made adjustments to it. So my, my point is, I'd like to know what kinda product we're gonna put in there. Is it gonna be attractive? Because right now, we're just gonna, all we're gonna do is we're gonna shrink the footprint, and we're gonna say good to go, rather than seeing what does that product look like. And that would make me personally a lot more comfortable with voting to approve or not approve this particular project. And I agree, we do need to offer a variety. Quite honestly, I'm really unsure about this particular area of our city and whether development even belongs here right now, but they own the property and they're certainly welcome to develop it. I just don't wanna lower my standard without knowing what we're getting ourselves into.
Mayor, may I ask, before the applicant speaks, because I would like him to add to what I have to say.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. You know, I appreciate this issue, and I know that years ago, we wouldn't even allow 55-foot lots. I mean, you know, and in the staff analysis and findings, I mean, we, we put in stipulations that if you want to deviate from this, you almost have to, you know, build in something that makes us want to approve this type of development. And I know that you have stated in, in your analysis that there are open space amounts and amenities that have been added to this. So maybe part of the picture, sir, that you need to give for the picture to, you know, this council that wants to see, are those added open space and amenities that are allowing you to even deviate, you know, us deviating from our own standard to allow this, this size lot? So maybe that's something else that you can add to the conversation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Loortano?
Yeah, I find myself oddly agreeing with Councilman Stip down there.
Go.
I know, it's not a roll. I totally agree, we need smaller lots. There is a percentage of people, a high percentage of people, that do not want these giant houses. But I think if you would have come forward, and maybe we can take this back and vote on it another day, that might be the solution, because you're telling us about garages are now gonna be in the back. I mean, when we seen other plans like come up with, from Australia, or we had some town homes come up, we gotta kinda see how they were going to fit, and when we're changing the lots. And I'm visual, I need to see that. So that would really help me. I can't say it's a, it's a no, because I know it's something we need, but I don't know if we need it here. I need to see at least some sort of general rendering, honestly.
All right, can I ask him to come up? Is any other questions? All right, would you like to say your name, please?
Hi, Mayor and Council, my name's Scott Moore, I'm with BET Investments. We've owned the property for over a decade now, and it's had been faced with several challenges, as staff is fully aware of, but mainly with the realignment of the 303, we had to reconfigure all of the lots that we had originally. At that time, I think it was 1,380 lots, and where the master plan community today is under 1,250. So we've seen a significant reduction just in the inefficiency of what has happened with the 303, along with the right-of-way take that we, the condemnation case we had after we got all of the engineering work done, and had to go through the condemnation with McFlood and once again revise, revise all of the plats. So we've spent hundreds and thousands of dollars in engineering cost, re-engineering this project. The reason for the request tonight on the amendment is that the, the two different lot sizes, the lots aren't shrinking in size, but several of the parcels in there, along with these parcels, are basically, fit the same exact product. So without the amendment, there would be no diversity. You can't build a 35-foot wide or a 40-foot wide home with a side-turn garage, it just physically doesn't work. So with the additional five feet setback, without changing the lot dimensions, adding increased density, it allows us to do a side-turn garage, forward-facing porches and front entryways. So the feedback that we're receiving from all the builders is they won't come in from all the builders is, they won't come into this master plan community knowing that they're going to be, keep competing with each other. They want distinct product differences, and this is what we need to provide that to them. And we were looking forward to moving this project along, finally, in our 11th year, this coming year. We sent it out to, to the market for builder feedback, and it's very positive today with what we're, with the amendments we're asking for tonight. There still is the larger lots that are within this community that are not going to be changed. They will have larger yards, larger sideyards. There is no intention of changing any of those. The challenges that we're faced with in this Phase 1 is, based, the sewer that runs, that's in the ground today to allow us to develop, doesn't allow us any diversity in the product. So that's the reason for the request, and I thank you for your time.
I want to comment, I think Verrato has the same, some of these same home sites of this size.
They do, and they also have some of them that are very similar, and the builders, the feedback from the builders there, they're really struggling.
They are.
They're all trying to sell the exact same home.
I was, just as you were speaking, I was thinking, I've driven up there several times.
Eastmark is in the same situation, not to name any names, but.
And I will say, the frontage of those homes, the elevations of the homes are very appealing. And I think what Council is saying is that it would be nice to have a little bit different look than we, we see in homes in.
This would be a very significant difference in the look, than what, than what currently we have approved today.
Okay, yeah. Because that's what makes Verrato so unique, is those different neighborhoods and looking different. But they definitely have that size of home site, as well as the home, so. Bill, you had some more questions?
Do you have conceptual drawings or conceptual, have the builders provided anything that's going to, that would help us visualize what this looks like?
Well, I have 20 years in the home building and production as a career, and, and I, and I know the, exactly what the product would look like. Unfortunately, I didn't bring it with tonight, but I, I could provide that, yes.
I know for me personally, that would be, that would be helpful. I'm not trying to get in the way, but I want to know what I'm voting on before I approve it.
Well, I think it is part of our stipulation that we must provide side-turn garages along with this amendment, and they do also have to go through a product review prior to being able to build out there. So the product would come forward with staff's review before it would be approved. Am I not, I'm correcting that, yeah?
I'd like to see that before I vote on approving it, that's all I'm saying.
We can certainly provide that.
So how, how do we work through this before we vote on this? Because I'm listening to the council, and I'm going to say, as a mayor, I'm for this community, and I understand the market, and I know what it can and cannot look like. But to be reassured, how can we work through this?
Yes, Mayor, Council, just a point of clarification, so everybody was clear, we're not changing the lot width at all, we're just changing the side setbacks.
That's exactly right.
So the number of lots, the density, the phasing plan, the utilities and everything, all the engineering design still works, as they've made their investment, as you've heard already, just changing the actual footprint of the, of the lot that's buildable. And then, one other item I would like to just mention is that, and I heard, I forgot which, one of the council members indicated it, that as things change, we should look for enhancements in, in design and streetscape and things of that nature. And your staff does that currently. As a matter of fact, some projects that you will, you will see coming before you will have a list of agreed-to stipulated in, design enhancements for the smaller lots, in order to provide that quality and continuity of the image that we want to all work to get. In regards to the particulars of this individual action, gentleman is right, and Steve, is that these products have to go through, before they are issued a building permit, have to go through and meet our design guidelines, which is already being approved by, approved by council. And then to Councilmember Stip's question of seeing the actual structures or representative samples, if you will, of the lot, of the product that would be put on the, on the, on the lots itself, we have asked for those in the past, and sometimes we run into some headwind, just honestly, from the building community, because there, we don't know exactly who the builder is yet. They don't have a builder signed up. So we can, we can ask for that, we can get representative samples or a flavor of that quality, or what it would look like, if that would satisfy the council, we can certainly do that. But I do know that the developers are somewhat hesitant to provide that, because it can be interpreted as a misrepresentation, which is what we do, absolutely do not want to have. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, just a question, how many builders do you think you'll have, I mean, in the, in the community, totally, normally that you have?
With this, yes, Mayor and Council, with this amendment, we have the possibility of putting up to three different builders in that Phase 1. Without it, it's just going to be one builder, because it's the same product.
Yes, Councilman Stip?
Chris, for just to, if you're asking, does that satisfy me? Yes, it does. A representative sample, I'm not looking for the product.
Yes, sir.
Or the, and I certainly appreciate a builder not wanting to necessarily release their latest design as well, but just so we have some idea, what will that look like? What will three of these places put together? Because in my mind right now, we have a place in our community that already has virtually zero lot line, and I don't like it. So if this is better than that, then we're, this vote is good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Are you, are you assured?
Well, I'm going to, at this point, I'm going to make a motion to table this to the next meeting until we get those drawings.
Could you tell me the timeline on this, and, and the detriment to the developer, the investors? Could you just?
It's, it's very challenging. Once again, we've, we've worked with the, the city on the alignment of the 303, we've had several setbacks, and, and I'm not sure how fast I can get product, because as they've stated, it, the builders aren't willing to give it up. I'm going to have to come up with some sort of rendering that would be a representative of what the product would look like, but it would certainly be up to the builders that purchase the parcels to make that decision. We're ready to move forward right now, we're, we're in with plan review on our final engineering work, and want to get this, this to the market as soon as possible. So this would, this is a setback to, for us, absolutely.
Well, I, after being in the, in the business, I can certainly appreciate that.
And, and part of our development agreement originally for the, the lot variations, the size in lots, is because of working with the city on providing that 303 right-of-way. We did have an approved PAD originally that we had to rework, and we've reworked it, I think, three or four times since then.
So if this gets voted down, what is the delay in them progressing? Long, we're, we're, we're at the holiday time.
Mayor, you're asking, sorry, procedurally, if, if the motion succeeds, it'd be tabled to the next council meeting, it should be in, I guess, mid-January.
January 11th. And for a point of order, there is a motion on the floor.
And that procedure needs to be handled, but so it should be a call for a second.
And then we can have discussion.
So there is a motion on the floor to table this?
I'll second it.
So we have a second by, it was made by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. So I guess we put it up for vote?
We can have discussion.
Now we can have discussion.
All right, now discussion, all right.
And since I made the, the motion, I can, you know, I can appreciate the difficulty that, that this puts everybody in, but that gives almost a month to, and if you've got 20 years, you've probably got a giant portfolio full of photos or renderings, that this is about what it's going to look like with five foot, to get that to us. And quite frankly, for me, that could be a very quick vote on the 11th, and you're good to go on the 12th. So you're, I don't think you're really going to do any building between now and then, anyway.
Councilman Stip? I'm sorry.
We look alike.
Councilman Pizzillo.
My, my concern from a visual standpoint, and with Stip to the point where I've seen some of these almost zero lots, okay, in, in our city, and I don't like them either. And I'm not saying your product's not going to be there, because I've seen some products in Verrato looks nice, but it's hard for me to be voting on something when we're shrinking those lines from five foot down to five, and not seeing that concept, because I am visual when it comes to that, and saying, okay, and then when I see it, be disappointed, because it was nowhere close to what was visually in my head. So I'm, I'm with Stip on this one.
And I'm visual as well, and I'm trying to see this, because some of the examples you gave us, like up in Estrella, where there might be a smaller lot line, there's a lot of open space. So it's very hard for me to see how that is, because when I go up to Verrato, there are some that are very close that look good, and there's others that are very close that really do look like the big McMansion on the small lot. In Pebble Creek, you have a lot of open space, and you don't have a lot of backyard fences, and I mean, so there's a lot of different ways that this is done. So if we could get some sort of visual, that would really help me, because then I feel assured that we're going forward, and, you know, I, not that I don't take your word, because I, I know you've got those 25 years, I don't have those 25 years in my head. So that, that would really help me.
Any other comments on this side?
I have a question of.
Councilman Osborne?
Sirorik, if this was to be a tie, what's, and obviously, it doesn't pass then.
On your motion, I was just about to start looking, because I noticed there's six of you up there. And your motion to continue, are to table, if you have a tie vote, the motion fails. So then you move back to your main motion. And then if you have a tie vote on your main motion, that fails as well.
And then what? Further discussion?
Excuse me?
And then further discussion, if we have two?
If, if, if the main motion fails, per the charter, you can't, you cannot make a motion for reconsideration for at least 24 hours.
Which then puts us back to January 11th.
Any way you look at it, it's going to be January 11th.
I see.
Well, I just, Council, I, I just wanted to put out just a little bit of a caution here. You are sending a message, you are sending a loud and clear message to the home building development, and there will be repercussions from it. We as a council now are putting ourselves as builders, designers, and you name it. I know in your hearts, you just want it to be sure and be assured that it's going to look good. Some of you on the council have not liked any of the small lot lines all along, and I respect your opinion on it, but they do fill up with people, families do buy them, it is a need out there, and yes, nationally, this is a trend, this is a need, and we, in marketing, you always change to what the need is. Listen, they don't build some of the things they built back when I was coming up, and I'd love to see them again, but it's never going to happen again, it may happen in the future. So I just, I just want to prepare you, there will be repercussions from the, from the home builders, because they do have some rights too, and, and they do have a lot of investment in our city, and it's, it's dollar bills to them, it's timing to the bank, it's bank loans, it's all of that. So I'm, I'm just putting out a little word of caution to you, yes. Vice Mayor?
Can we also maybe add a stipulation that we could get those renderings in the motion to, if we went forward but got to see those, so at least we know what was coming, that could be an added stipulation?
Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, I do want to state that we do have it out, a marketing package out to all the builders right now. I'm going to have to pull that. And you're right, it's, the first of the year is when they all start moving on things, and I'm, this is going to put us behind. But I mean, I'm, I, I understand your concerns, I'm not trying to persuade your decision-making, but it, I'll do the best that I can, but it's, it's, it's been a struggle for so many years already.
Mayor, you know, I'm, I'm going to add to this. I mean, typically, you, you all know, I mean, from planning, zoning through all my years on council, I am very particular about things like this, and I under, I respect your, your comments, because we do like to, to have a general idea. But I'm, I'm, right now, understanding what's going on, understanding the history of this development. I'm leaning on the fact that we have specific design guidelines, and we also have stated that this size lot, which had already been approved before, this size lot, also had stipulations on it, because we were deviating from our original items, and we approved that without having, so, so I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with this. I would love to see this, and you know what, it's always one of those things that, yes, it may be something that half of us don't like, and half of us do, I might be one of them, go, man, I really don't like that, and maybe you, maybe the builder will listen. But, but the fact is, is we've really put in place, as a city, guidelines and, and stipulations on things, trying to avoid things coming to us that we don't like. And so tonight, I'm at the position that I would vote in favor of this, because I believe that this has been looked at so many times, that we have things in, they're not fail safes, but we have things in place to try to avoid, you know, the, the plain, ugly box homes that we don't want. I mean, we've, we've done that in our guidelines.
And, and I think they've gotten the message, so that's clear, so. Any other counts? Vice Mayor?
I guess, I guess the message that I think we're trying to send is that, please send us, when you come, send us, bring those 25 years with you, because I do want to see as it goes through. I don't want to delay it, but if there's a marketing package out there, if we could get that, if you could talk to staff, or, and get something so that we can get an idea. Because when we go back and these houses are built, you know, people are going to call us and say, what's going up there? You know, and I know we have good design guidelines, I know we have fabulous staff that will look at them, but it's hard to say, we're changing these houses and putting the garages and moving all that stuff, and not have any visual. I am on the fence, I'm back and forth, I'm really not quite sure how I'm going to vote. But I, I really would like to see that, at least your guarantee that even if we vote for this to go forward, that you will get those to us so we can have an idea. Because our job is also not to veto specific, you know, guidelines, you know, to micromanage, but I'd like to see what it's visual, okay? That's where I am.
Mayor and Council, physically, with, you, without this, the amendment, you can't put a side-turn garage on it. So it will be the exact same product. There's, what's approved today is the exact same product with one builder, and it's just going to be that whole one-third section. They, they won't deviate from the product size, or they can't, I mean, they can't deviate from the architectural style. And it, and a side-turn garage has to have the, the minimums that we're asking for, in order for it to work.
Mayor, Council, if I can interject one second, if I may interject. If, should you all elect to approve this tonight, we will definitely have as a follow-up to pass along the representative information for you. And I, and I really would like to underscore the fact that we do have the design guidelines, they, the, the home plans, when they come through the building permit process, do have to meet that, or they don't, they don't get a permit. And increasing the, the flexibility for the width of the home on the existing lot, really does nothing but enhance, and that's one of the things that we work to on smaller lots, is the enhancement of that front streetscape, which is the representative quality that people see when they come visit our community.
Oh, yes, yes. Councilman Holman?
Well, there are a couple of things that are bothering me, and, and maybe facing rotten tomatoes on my way out the door tonight.
I don't have any tomatoes, if you're referring to me.
I just, I, I really get concerned. We, we got the packets on Thursday, and I'm, I guess I'm not quite understanding why the question wasn't asked of staff, why we, if there was a possibility of getting a visual, if it truly was that important, to seeing it. I, I mean, that, that concerns me. And I really feel that we have had some serious challenges that face the developer, not in his control, not necessarily in our control, but I feel that it's, it's incumbent upon us to, to be a partner with this. I, I don't like win-lose situations, I've, I, I just, they, they hurt my heart, and I don't think it's good business. That perhaps at this point, I don't know if people feel there needs to be further discussion, that's possible, but perhaps we need to call for the question, and see if there is a need for. and see if there is a need for, maybe our discussion has, can bring it to a closure because we, I don't think we're getting anywhere.
Yes. And, and before we get there, I just, each of us have individual feelings about home building and what is, what is good and what is bad. And I don't think it's our place to make those decisions for the public all the time. I think we need to have a variety of, of homes in different communities that meets the needs of many. And there is a need out there, or they wouldn't be building them because they do their market analysis and they're finding out what the market is. And if we want to progress, then we've gotta be progressive. And so, pardon me?
Bill did have something.
Bill, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Bill wants to speak? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, he's been.
Oh, I was going to let him, of course. Bill?
Go ahead and finish, Mayor.
No, I'm, I'm done. I've said just about all I can say.
Christopher, you keep coming back to the design guidelines. Can you speak with some specificity about what reassurances we can have regarding that? Because I don't have them committed to my memory.
Sure. Yes, sir. I'm gonna let Steve address that because he does many of the design reviews for us in-house prior to building permits.
Mayor, council members, I know council is familiar with our design guidelines, especially our residential design guidelines. We had an update a few years ago that we brought before you. The design guidelines have, have changed as, as the city has changed. So this project is since 2007, it's not a 2007 design guidelines. It is, they have been updated. What the specificity in the design guidelines that we look for, we have several design guidelines that require livable area in front of garages, front porches, courtyards. Basically, the overall intent is it's not just the garage face. That's all you see from the street, but it is either part of the house, a porch, an entry, an enhanced entryway. Those are features that we have added to improve the streetscape. There's also other measures that the home builder can incorporate. One of those is different driveway surfaces. Instead of, you know, white concrete driveway, they can do pavers or stained concrete, something like that. The home builders also, and this is one that they used in El Cidro, detached sidewalk for street trees. And so El Cidro, they provided a little wider landscape strip so they could provide vegetation in that area. And that, and that is one that El Cidro incorporated into their design. But specifically to the house, we do have those design guidelines. Basically, those design guidelines are what govern homes going up in Estrella, Palm Valley, different areas within the city. So those products, those elements that you see, they're different in community, community by community. But those, if you like what you're seeing coming from the home builders, that's what you would see here because that's the design guidelines that govern. They're citywide design guidelines. So in that sense, the product, even though this is El Cidro, we have our overall guidelines that will govern, will bring forward a product that while sensitive to this area, it will meet our guidelines that we've adopted. All right, thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, I have another question. I'm trying to help myself visualize here. So this may not be your product, this may not be your builder, but are we talking something like this with the double garage and the single garage, or just a, a one garage? Yeah, help me out here. I'm pulling up houses to try to give myself some visual. I'm just pulling up houses to try to give myself some visualization what we're...
That's a forward-facing garage, and that's a 45-foot wide product. It takes a product that size to be able to pull that garage forward and then turn it so that you have, you're not looking at a front garage.
Okay, but is it something like this what we're talking about here?
That's what the product would look like.
Okay, see.
Typical product.
Except the garage does not face the street.
The garage, this would allow for side turn garages.
Side turn, right.
Sorry. That helps me. That's what I'm trying to figure out so I can visualize when we're putting these houses together.
Counselman Pizzillo?
Just a, a gentle comment. And again, I get back to the visuality. And I, I realize, Mayor, you're, you're concerned, and I, and I appreciate your concern about the blowback on the builders. From my perspective, we're in the forever business, period. And from my perspective, I'm looking long-term what I think is in the best interest of this community. Product, everything. Now, we may not always agree on what that is, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But the problem I'm trying to get my hands around is the five-foot line. I've seen a lot of them, and I don't like them. And if I could just visualize around me that by making this a five-foot line, long-term, in this community, it's not gonna turn into a place that is an eyesore. It's actually gonna turn into a place that's gonna draw people to, then I'm there. But I, I have nothing to visualize, because I've seen them both ways. You go to Verado, you got a really nice product. I've seen them move somewhere into the city that I don't know how they were approved to start with. So that's what kind of is, is, is my conundrum, on figuring out where to go with this. Because I'm responsible after I vote, what's gonna be long-term. And, and again, I respect everybody's opinion on there, and I can appreciate the position that you happen to be in, but that's what's making it tough for me.
Mayor and Councilmember, I just want to clarify that it's 10 feet between homes. It's not five.
Well, five to the line.
Right. To the property line. But, and, and what you do see in, in Verado, I think, is less than that in some areas.
It'll be a block wall, right?
They'll have zero lot lines and, and even less distance between homes.
Yeah.
And we have that in Pebble Creek. And they sell. In fact, the smaller homes are selling faster than bigger homes. If I had to sell my house today, I would have a very difficult time. Too big, too much yard, don't want it. So, you know, the market's out there. So, okay, well, we have, first of all, we have to decide. So we have a motion, amended motion on the table. Is that correct? All right, we had a call.
Never had a second on that. So at this point.
Yeah, I second.
We had, all right, so we have a call.
Okay, so you had a call for the question, you have a second, then you needed two-thirds majority to end debate.
He lost me.
But you have three motions on the floor right now. You have the main motion, you have the motion to continue, then you had a call for the question. The call for the question requires a second, which...
Okay, so first we have to call, call Bill's motion.
I did not hear a second for the call of the question.
No, Sherilyn's motion was called the question. It was not seconded.
Oh.
It was not seconded, so the debate continued.
Right. But it sounds like you may be done with the debate anyway.
Until somebody, since somebody seconds it.
If someone were to second it, then you would vote on the call of the question.
Oh.
So if somebody's considering.
It sounds like debate's over anyway, so I would probably just allow it to die.
Counselman Osborne just seconded it.
Okay, so now you have a vote on the call for the question.
All right. And a roll call vote, right?
It's actually a show of hands, or a roll. It can't be a voice vote.
No, no, I'm doing a roll call.
Okay, a roll call will work.
I'm doing a roll call. So roll call vote, please.
Call the question.
Wait, what is the question?
Call the question to end debate.
All right, she called.
End debate on continuing the, the thing to the next meeting.
That's technically where we're at.
Right.
So roll call.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Calling the question.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Now, do we know what that calling the question is?
We're ending debate on the continuation.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Now what?
Now you vote on your continuance.
Now we vote on the continuance.
All right. Who made the motion? All right. So roll call vote? Did, did we have a second? Yeah, we had Bill, Pizzillo second. All right, so we do a roll call on this?
Councilmember Holman?
I don't, I need...
No. Vice Mayor Lortano?
This is the, a yes vote would continue to January, and no vote, you would vote tonight on the main motion.
So what was your vote?
I said no for that one.
Uh, Councilmember Osborne?
Nay to continue.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Yea.
Yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Nay.
Uh, fails 4-2.
We had to pass that one on for them to see.
Now we vote on 7.7.
Now we need to vote on 7.7.
Yes, I am. I was just pausing just a moment because there was a picture showing up on that, so. All right. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Nay.
Councilmember Stip?
Nay.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 4-2.
Thank you very much. Is it what?
Oh, I, no, okay.
Okay.
It says adopt ordinance.
Yeah, so, all right. We're ready to go to 7.8. Is to consider accepting the final report for the ADOT noise reevaluation, reevaluation study that would, that was conducted along north side of I-10 from State Route 303 to Estrella Pebble Creek Parkway. Rebecca Zook to present.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to present the final report for acceptance by council this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and give a short recap of the, the study that was conducted, along with the analysis, and then move right into the conclusions. Again, this is the study area, which is bound to the west by the 303, to the east by Estrella, north of I-10, and then also north of McDowell. This project started back in February when ADOT made a presentation at a public meeting to the Pebble Creek and Palm Valley area. Out of that presentation, we moved into working with ADOT and then the city and listening to our citizens and council. And we moved forward with conducting a noise study. That, that noise study was done between the time of September 1st and October 5th. We had several meetings, both with the community and with council, to update you through the progress, with the most recent meeting being on November 18th at Pebble Creek at Eagles Nest, where we presented the conclusions and the findings. Again, there were 13 sites throughout the study. These were volunteer sites, both in Pebble Creek and Palm Valley. This was the first in the state to conduct a 24/7 noise analysis. Typically, it's done under much shorter duration. Again, we did the study for approximately six weeks and gathered over 900 hours of readings. The conclusions were, after analysis of a number of different mitigation measures, that the planned rubberization of both Interstate 10 and McDowell Road would be the solution. Interstate 10 will be rubberized in the fall of 2016. That rubberization will reduce the sound levels between 4 and 10 dBAs. Our situation has groove concrete, which typically the minimum reduction is 6 dBAs. Additionally, we will be performing, installing rubberized asphalt on McDowell Road as part of our pavement management in the spring of 2016. I'm just gonna show you a quick glance at the five long-term readings that we took. You've seen these exhibits before. The, the new representation on there is the thicker blue line, which is the 4 to 10 DBA reduction. So the noise readings that were taken over that time period would now fall between the, the blue marks of the 4 to 10 reduction. This was one of our locations. I'll just thumb through the five different locations. You'll notice that all of them drop well below the ADOT threshold. This last one, I'll remind you, was the site where the, the peak was due to the, the lawn crew work that was going on during the timeframe of approximately 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Additionally, this was the location where the monitor was placed at eight feet high, and typically they're placed at five to six feet in height. So it was above the, the wall. Again, the conclusions are that no additional sound mitigation measures are recommended, that the schedule, schedule of the rubberized asphalt placement, placement on I-10 and McDowell Road is expected to reduce the sound levels below what is the threshold by at least 6 dBAs. With that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion a second to accept the final report regarding the noise reevaluation study that was conducted along the north side of Interstate 10 from State Route 303 to Estrella Pebble Creek Parkway? Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Counselman Stip and a second by Vice, by Counselman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Counselman Stip?
All right. I make no secret when I'm unhappy, but I'm gonna make it a big statement that I'm exceptionally happy. On this particular situation, this was, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say this is one of the greatest things the city has ever done for its residents, to hear the complaint, to take action on their behalf, again, you know, with ADOT, to go out and take the measurements. Now, the result was no different than ADOT predicted. However, we responded to the needs of our community, and I am, I'm exceptionally proud of us as a community. Staff did a great job. The feedback that I heard from people that were at the, at the event in October, while they weren't necessarily pleased that the results didn't come back the way that they had anticipated, they were exceptionally happy that, that the city took the time, listened, did the work, did the extra work. And that was really, for me personally, that's really what I wanted to make sure that we saw out of it. So for that, you know, the results are the results. And, you know, I think there's some benefit to us not having to put up sound walls, which we'll probably hear about in the near future. But in the, in the short term, I'm happy to accept the report and certainly happy to, you know, to take it. But I really wanted to express both to Brian and everybody on staff, you know, Rebecca, and, and I know, you know, Bob, you know, now he's not here. But it, this is just, it was, it was a great experience. So thank you very much.
Next. Counselman Osborne?
There's not a whole lot to, to say. I echo Counselmember Stip's thoughts. You know, that was really quite an eye-opener of walking into that room on the first meeting. And I, I really think that we did listen to the citizens, and I think that they truly see that we were on their side. And, and this wasn't a pitting of us or them against ADOT or anything like that, but it was just looking to, to find, you know, what the answer was, good or bad. And, and I really appreciate how this, this process has gone. And, and I think it reassures the citizens that, you know what, we, we did listen, and we did care, and we did, you know, step in there for them. So thank you very much for that.
Counselman Pizzillo?
Again, I just want to echo Counselmember Stip. I appreciate the effort. I mean, we had two competing factions going on there. We had the McDowell Road, you know, development and the concerns of the citizens on the noise, to try to find that happy medium between the two, that had the, you know, development still being taken care of, as well as the concerns of the residents. I really appreciate the effort you all stepping up and resolving that issue. Thank you.
Well, it was magnificent. You did a great job. Staff did a great job preparing for this. And you're right, it's the best way to solve a problem. But it could have had a bump in the road anywhere along that way. But your organization of how you presented it was, was magnificent. I can't say more. I don't, we don't say magnificent very often. It's a real kudo to you. So thank you very much. So are we ready to vote here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. We're going to take a break, all right? So we're going to pause for a break, and we'll come back and continue on nine, 7.9. If you would.
They're on, they're on now.
Okay, we're on now. Thank you very much. All right, we've just returned from our break. So the next item on business is to consider the modification of the city's designation of assured... the modification of the city's designation of assured water supply. Mark Holmes, Water Resource Manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, member of the Council. Good to see you again. I'm here before you this evening to talk about our Assured Water Supply Designation Renewal. The Department of Water Resources is just about to issue our renewal, and this is kind of our last housekeeping item to approve the resolution to move forward. We believe the Department should issue the decision order before the end of the year or probably the first of next year. You probably recall this slide. This show shows the pyramid of the requirements to demonstrate your 100-year assured water supply. On the very bottom is the physical water availability, legal and continuous water availability for 100 years. We focused on the physical water availability. We updated the city's groundwater model to include Rainbow Valley for the first time. I'll talk about that in the next slide. Also, the continuous water availability. We submitted our 10-year CIP and five-year CIP plans to the Department to demonstrate continuous water availability and the projects that are planned for the future. We also demonstrated the financial capabilities and that we're able to treat the water for water quality standards and meeting the management and plans and goals. One of the items of interest is the physical availability determination. On the far right column, you'll see our current designation that was issued by the Department of Water Resources in 2010. It gave us 13,761 acre-feet per year for 100 years as what was physically the wet water available to the city. Through our groundwater modeling efforts, you see that dark shaded area in the column just to the left of the far right there, the 9,349, that was what our groundwater model proved, what was physically available every year for 100 years, taking in consideration the landowners out there who have already locked up physically available water through analysis of assured water supplies, such as Amarinth and others. And also incidental recharge was increased. It's a percent of your total water delivered on an annual basis. So, in essence, we're trying to just virtually almost double our physical availability of wet water supplies here within the city. So, about 25,402 or thereabouts. Our current city designation of 2010, the Department of Water Resources recognizes 14,642.56 acre-feet in our current water resources portfolio. These are our legal withdrawal, our authorizations. We have CAP water, long-term storage credits, groundwater, and direct-delivered reclaimed or effluent. Our goal with our renewal is to double that to 28,367. The stars there are indicating the water supplies that we're hoping the Department of Water Resources will increase the recognition of through the enhancements of what we showed in our application on that pyramid. So, having them recognize our entire CAP entitlement of nearly 18,000 acre-feet and all of the available reclaimed water produced at 157th Avenue Reclamation Facility. And again, we believe they'll be issuing that at the end of this month, should you approve this resolution. And with that, I'll happily answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Well, the city clerk, please read Resolution Number 151731 by title only, please.
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1731, authorizing the submission of an application to Arizona Department of Water Resources to modify its designation of assured water supplies.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Now, open for discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
The actual wet water we have today and our demand that we have today, what percentage of our demand today is what the total wet water available today? Are we at 80%, 90%? I mean, what are, I'm not sure, I want to be sure I'm asking it right. I mean, we have so much wet water access today, and we have so much demand today. What percentage of the demand is what we total available today?
Great question. So, with the current physical wet water that's in our designation today, looking at pretty much north of the Gila River in that central planning area, we also get water delivered from Adamant as part of that bulk water delivery agreement. So, probably about 50% right now of what's physically available to the city is what we're currently being, we're currently recovering and delivering to our service area. About 50%.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. So, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
All right, thank you very much, Mark. Okay, seven point 10, business to consider approving the October and November budget transfers, consider a reduction in the CFD revenues, and receive a presentation on October 2015 financial report. We have Larry Lang, our Finance Director, and Lori Wigan-Roth, Budget Research Manager. Hello.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have several things we're going to go through with you this evening, and most of them relate to one concept that we're trying to do, which is to get you more timely financial information and get you more timely on the budget transfers and so forth. So, tonight, we're going to talk briefly about the new monthly financial report that we're proposing, and in your packet, you had an October financial report. The intent is that if everyone's okay with the process, we're going to provide that in the manager's report the following month so that you get current information. We're also going to talk a little bit, at the request of some of you, about contingencies. It's a term you hear a lot. What is meant by it? It does seem to create some confusion, so we're going to talk briefly on that. We're going to talk also a little bit about budget transfers. We're changing the process. We want to start doing the budget transfers on a monthly basis instead of bringing you a larger group at one time, and we're hoping that'll help clarify the budget transfers when they need to be made, and we've got a new format that we think will make it a little bit easier to understand. And then finally, we've got, because of turnover in our CFD operations, we've got a very unique one-off situation we're going to ask mainly for you to endorse as we move forward. So, I'm going to start very high level to talk about the monthly financial report. I'm not really going to review a copy of it as much as talk about what we're trying to accomplish within it. I assume everyone did receive a copy of it and have had a chance to at least look a little bit at it. Again, what we're trying to accomplish, the first thing is, is to improve timeliness for you. As you'll recall, the first quarter monthly report you got in November, I believe it was, before we had that done, and at that point in time, the information is quite dated. And so, what we're really trying to do is give you information as we're getting it. So, we're going to, you know, try to get you all of this quicker. The process of doing that means we're not going to give you as much analysis as we did before. We're going to be giving you more what I would call raw data, and then you feel free to call us for questions, or we can come in and discuss it with the whole group if that's where we need to go. One of the reasons the reports took so long is there was a lot of staff time to do the research. We had to get with each department on each line item within theirs before we ever brought you the information. It took a lot of time. So, what we're hoping to gain out of this is to free up some staff time to do other things while still getting you timely information. So, near the end of the following month, we're going to include that report. The only time it could get a little different is the time we're in now where the holidays can interfere with it a little bit, but we're going to try to get it, you, before the end of the following month so that you've got it on a current basis. We're also going to include other financial information that we give you. The monthly sales tax report, we're going to include that with it every month, so you're getting it with the other data. We're also, we give you every quarter, we receive a report from our investment advisor. We're going to give you that report as part of this, so sometimes you're going to get a thicker report on a monthly basis. Then also, if there's just more current information, we'll give you some kind of a report, whether it be at a meeting like this or in communications or in a yellow paper, that type of thing. Examples of that were when the headlines were coming out with the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority to maybe get you some information as you're getting calls from reporters and so forth.
Yes.
So, that's it on the financial report, unless there were questions, and I've got Lori here on that part, if you've got any specific questions about the report, or if you've got questions about the process that you'd like to ask.
All right, so, just to clarify, are we doing Lori, this one, the presentation, or is it for the second one?
Mayor, what I'd like to do, if we could, is we'll go through all of these, and then at the end, we'll ask for the specific actions that we're looking for.
Okay.
This report, there's really no action required on the monthly report.
All right, then, so, any questions on Larry's presentation? All right, then, go ahead.
The next part I'd like to talk about then is on the contingencies terminology. As we've come through various conversations, there's been some confusion or what appears to be a duplication, especially when we were doing budget transfers. So, we're going to give you just a few examples of the contingency. The term is used often, it becomes a technical term for us in the budget process as we're putting together budget publications, and that's why we see it so much. So, the first one we're going to talk about is the contingency that is really the rainy day fund. That's the 90-day reserve that we have. That is cash. That is funding that we have never, in the time that I've been here, we have never tapped to spend, nor would you expect that money to be spent. That is to leave us a 90-day cash reserve so that our cash flow is in place. Some people call that a rainy day fund, call it a cash reserve, 90-day reserve. The next one is, we refer to it internally as a city manager contingency, and fiscal year 16, that is $500,000. That is an appropriation that is available for expenditure. From time to time, it is brought back to the city council to actually expend the funding. The way, and some of that is just within our accounting system. Within our accounting system, we never charge an expense to it. We reduce that appropriation and put it in the category that the need comes up. And so, last year, the grand total for the whole year spent out of that was approximately $120,000 for that particular fiscal year, and last week, I believe it was, the city council approved approximately $100,000 on the APS and Sunbelt Agreement. Then we have a couple of others that are, we refer to as contingencies, and they're very similar. One is called a grant contingency, and the second, for this presentation, we're calling an appropriation contingency, but you've seen it also referred to, or one way or the other, as CIP contingency fund or proposed improvement district. In both cases, both the grants and the appropriation contingency, these are monies that are set aside and can only be used if the source of funding comes with them. An example of that would be, a very simple example, would be a grant. We didn't expect the grant. It comes in, $100,000, we're going to spend it. You would take the appropriation from this $2 million and move it over to one that is spendable because you have the grant to literally spend the funding.
Larry, I'm sorry. Councilman Pizzillo wants to ask a question.
Just a question, Larry, and I think it's contingency where maybe some of the others get hung up, and I appreciate the expanded definition of this, but you've been in business for a long time. Is there another word for those that there's no real money in it, but it's a holding appropriation spot that you can use other than the word contingency? You know what I mean? Because when you say grant contingency, an outsider looking at it, go, okay, that's money that we have that we can move over, where in reality, it's just a holding spot that if the grant comes in and you have money, you can take that appropriation and now pledge it to the money. I think that word, contingency, tends to mean that there's money there. You know what I mean? And I'm just throwing that out to you. If there's another term that you can think about other than the word contingency, because a lot of people think contingency, money, but those are just holding spots for, if you do have money. Does that make sense? And I don't know, and I don't know if there's another term that can drive your same point home without using the word contingency for these two categories.
It makes perfect sense. I actually struggled with that issue for years of what that word would be. I like what we've done here. Lori came up with the term appropriation contingency because at least there, that kind of made it clear to me that we're dealing on the appropriation side as compared to something that's actually funded elsewhere. I'm open to suggestions. Lori and I are talking about it. Any suggestions that any of you have, not necessarily tonight, but you know, at some point, feel free to get back to us. I really am, because I struggle with the issue, and that's part of why we're doing this tonight, is we use that term so much that it just comes up a lot.
Yeah, and again, I don't have an answer tonight for you. I'm just throwing out a term because we have real contingency with real money, and then we have contingency that's a holding spot for when money comes in, and contingencies in the titles of both. The fact you've got appropriation, it helps me. I don't know if it helps them, unless, I'll ask you to ask them, but I don't know if there's another technical term or one that's more simple. Just throwing that out. I didn't expect an answer back tonight on it, but if there's something that gets it a little clearer when you make those transfers and you know that this requires a tagline that says, here's where the cash is coming from, because this was just authorizing money to be spent, so to speak.
I think also, when we get to the budget transfers, and Lori, I'm going to ask Lori to go through that part, we're trying to make that very clear in the budget transfer sheet. Instead of showing it out of this contingency, we're showing where there's new money, and that is the column that, that's what we call it, and that's just to clarify exactly what your point is.
I'm going to let you in. This is what happens when I let you do discussion before we pay the motion, but go ahead, Joanne.
Thank you.
Any questions?
As you were going through these, and I really do appreciate the breakdowns of them. I think that's helpful. What, and actually, as we're discussing these words, so, the other contingency fund that we don't have mentioned here is the council contingency, because we have, and I don't, I'm calling it contingency just because that's how, but did you have a different word for it for there? Because that's, there's like $200,000. That's real. So, is that not, that's just a budgeted line item? Is that the difference between, because I know we don't, we don't, as where it comes to the manager's contingency, every budget year, we put back money into it, so it's always at 500,000, where the council, I'm calling it contingency, we don't put monies back into it. So, what, why, what's the difference there? Help me understand that.
Okay, that is an appropriation that we put. I believe that the fund you're talking about, we refer to as community funding, and that's for those various programs. The city council actually reviews that separately from the budget of how that money is appropriated. You still make the decisions of how that's appropriated, but we appropriate, we do it as one line item to facilitate that process.
But, you know, and the funny thing is, in my mind, I call it the council contingency. So, I mean, that's just a, I mean, I'm not saying that that's obviously wrong, but that's just in my mind, that's how I clarify.
Oh, I would not label it wrong. I think it's a reasonable terminology. Just add to it, to the mix a little bit.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Larry.
Okay. Yeah, so, that was kind of very quick on the contingency, and so, next, I'd like to move to the budget transfers, and I want to ask Lori if she would take the lead on that discussion.
Councilman Stip?
Maybe before we do that, this is a good time for questions, otherwise, we're going to end up going back. I think it's very important that we be clear about what is real money and what is not. And it doesn't matter what word you put before contingency, whether it be city manager contingency, council contingency, appropriation contingency. If it's real money, it probably should have, we should say, real money is contingency. Everything else, we're going to call appropriation, or what was your appropriation authorization, or, we take the word contingency out of it entirely. That way, it's easy for us to be able to say, this is real money, and this is a potential appropriation.
I think it's helpful also to the public, because I can remember that exact question coming up several times over. exact question coming up several times over, and they counted it, the people that were asking the question, they counted it as real money.
Okay, I, we will take that, and we will, whether it's, in the first case here, that contingency, for example, we could just call that, the, the, some type of a reserve, Lori and I'll work on terminology. Just to go through these two slides, the only one that meets the category that you're describing, that is, has money in it, is the city manager contingency. The, the rainy day, rainy day fund has money in it, but not money that we would go to, to fund anything.
No.
That is, your real emergency money is the only reason for that.
Right, but there's real money there.
There is real money.
There, that's real cash, but...
Right.
But, you know, I sure...
That's why I'm not suggesting we call it a fund, but I'm saying, there's real money there.
There is, yes.
And I think that's huge, because there's not real money in the appropriation contingency.
Or in the grant contingency.
Right.
Right.
That's correct. So that distinction, we appreciate, and we'll see if we can...
So it's really just those two that should have the change. All the others are real money, so...
Okay.
While we're not trying to tell you how to do your job, because they couldn't, but I will tell you that public perception, when they're reading the budgets, and they do read those...
Yep.
Certain times, and that is confusing to them, so...
We'll, we'll get something on you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Lori, then, if you'd talk in the budget transfers.
All righty. Again, we'll just go, kind of go through budget transfers. First, just again, why, why do we have to do budget transfers? We've heard that asked a couple of times. We have to have appropriation to spend, and that's why we have those things that we've called appropriation contingencies for today, we'll look for new names for those. When we do a budget transfer, we don't change the city's bottom line. The reason the council has to act on budget transfers are a few reasons. One is that the council has a policy that they want to see, and approve any CIP changes to a specific project of 75,000 or greater. Anytime that you're going to use such, the city manager's contingency, or if the day ever came that you needed to use the rainy day fund contingency, council would have to approve that. And then the other reason, and the main reason that you see budget transfers and you act on them, is because we're moving money between, or, not, sorry, not moving money, we're moving appropriation between lines of the budget that is legally adopted, and there's some state forms that we have to look at, that tell us, what are those lines? And so, the appropriation contingency is a line of appropriation, so anytime we have to use that to create the appropriation, to spend a new resource, it requires you to act, because we're basically moving it from one place in the appropriation structure to a new place in the appropriation structure. So those are the key reasons that you're asked to act on budget transfers. And the reason we generally need budget transfers are to address the unexpected. We're typically, in those cases, we're typically, if not always, moving the underlying funding that goes with that, so we may be moving it from one general fund department to another general fund department, or within a department's budget, they may have, you know, something may have broke, and they need to fix it, so they have to find a way to pay for it, so they move it from one line item in their budget to another. So we're moving the funds and the appropriation around. The other key reason that we need budget transfers are when new resources do become available. When that grant comes in, when we receive our payment from a developer to work on a specific, specific project, we need to do a budget transfer to create the appropriation, to spend those new resources. Another reason that a number of transfer, or budget transfers come to you are for what we've been calling technical reasons, or revisions, or corrections, and these are both planned and unplanned in nature, and when I say planned, it means they're, we budget in a different way than we do accounting. And so, those kinds are some of the ones that the last time we talked about budget transfers, we talked about that, that one, that debt service may be budgeted in one fund, specifically related to the stadium, there's some debt service budgeted in secondary property tax, but because it's an enterprise fund, for accounting purposes, we have to do that entire transaction in the enterprise fund, so we move the appropriation and the funds over there to do that. And that's a change, that'll, there'll always be some of these things where the budgeting and the gap, GASB required accounting are different. And we try to do those now, right at the beginning of the year, right after the budget is adopted, and you saw those in the first quarter. The other area are errors. We do have a manual system, even if we had an automated system, we're humans and we do make mistakes. Some of the errors that you've seen are that there was wrong accounting data input into the system, we just flipped the, the department number that was involved, or we flipped the line item that was involved. In other cases, you did see the last time we came before you, some mistakes where items were omitted from the budget in error, they were planned in the process, but in the, in the process to actually technically adopt the budget, they were left out. And those kind typically require a use of fund balance. The other reason for some of the largest budget transfers you see are because of reconciling the carryovers. And again, I think we budget conservatively when it comes to carryovers, we want to ensure we'll have enough appropriation in the new year to pay the bills associated with, you know, perhaps a contract that was awarded in the prior year for building a police station that wasn't finished, so we have to continue to pay those bills in the upcoming year. Most of the adjustments related to carryovers will reduce the budget, because we are conservative, we expect we're moving too much into the new year budget, and we expect that we'll be reducing those budget. But unbudgeted carryovers do occur, we, we don't always predict exactly what would happen. You'll see when we look at today's budget transfers, there's an item related to a sign truck, that all signals where it would be paid for last year, so we did not do a carryover. In the end, it wasn't delivered by the vendor in time, and so we were unable to pay it, and now it becomes an unbudgeted carryover. In that case, those funds are still in the, they end up in the ending balance, or in the beginning balance, because we didn't spend them last year, so we'll be, they will be sitting in the fund balance for us to take, to use in the current year. And so those carryovers are reconciled twice. We do it right after the year close, or right after the end of the 12th month, after we finish the first kind of pass at the year end, so that we can be sure to make any major corrections, so that nobody overspends in a major way. Then we come back through, if we go through all the accounting requirements and, and paying the final bills, and do another check, just in case any more adjustments are needed. So our plan for budget transfers is to come to you monthly with the budget transfers, it should improve, will improve the timeliness greatly. It'll also minimize the potential that an action will go forward that requires a budget transfer, before you've had a chance to approve that budget transfer. Our goal is to get to you at the last meeting of the following month, whenever it's feasible. And when it's feasible, we use a consent agenda item, if, if it's straightforward and simple. And then we're hoping that the presentation that we're going to use answers some of the questions we've been hearing consistently, and is a little easier to follow. So you have in your, in your packet, you had what we're, the, the transfer report for, basically, we have combined October and November, since November only had one, we were able to quickly pull it together and get it in with this group. To kind of walk you through that report, and we also have an example up on the screen, you know, start the date, the transfer number, transfer type. Transfer types are these types, we just talked about, new revenue, technical correction. Why is the transfer needed? So we go through an explanation of why the particular transfer is needed. We say the amount of the transfer. All transfers actually net to zero, because they're two-sided, so, but we're telling you basically what the one side is. Then we tell you, what is the ultimate funding source that's being impacted by the transfer? So, for example, this October 1st one, it was this, it, it was funds that we received for a traffic signal from a developer, and so it was, we received those funds, they were going to go into the Transportation Impact Fee Fund, so that's the fund that you're changing. And then from there, the rest of the report is going to then explain to you why, how we're paying for that transfer. So if it's a new resource, such as the one I just mentioned, it's going to go in that first column. We're paying for it by getting a new resource, some new money has come to us that we didn't plan. If there's no change in the ultimate funding source, and we, this, the, the report for approval doesn't have an example of that, but we put one up on the screen, basically, there's some, some funding available for FMLA backfill, if somebody has a vacancy due to FMLA, we have some general funds available for that. So in this case, we list that transfer, we describe it, say where it's from, but we show no funding change. It's one of those, it's just moving from one place in the general fund to another place in the general fund, so there doesn't change anything. And then the last group that's there, those last five columns, of general water, wastewater sanitation, and other funds, that, that is headed expenditures, or uses of, or savings or additions to, and then it's fund balance. So these are the ones where there are no resources in where we're getting the appropriation from. So we're then telling you, where are the resources going to come from, to back the particular transaction we're recommending. And so in this case, we have what I mentioned earlier, on the November 17th transfer, the unbudgeted carryover, the sign truck that I discussed. So that's described, the dollar amount is here, we say that it's in HERF, ending fund balance, because we didn't pay for the sign truck in the prior year. In this case, we're showing it under general, and we footnote that to say, HERF and the stadium will be shown under stadium, under general, because ultimately, they have general fund support, so the real ultimate impact of the change, unless it became millions of dollars, is to the general fund. And so that's how we're trying to show the difference between, this is a new resource that we have, that we didn't have before, or it's just moving around the funding and the appropriation that exists already. And in the last group, essentially, these are where we're taking fund balance and using them, using that fund balance to do something that we need to do in the current year.
Councilman Osborne?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just commenting, this looks pretty, pretty easy to understand.
Sorry. Councilman Stiff?
I'm trying to, and I looked at it, and the asterisk thing didn't help me. And I'd like to think I'm pretty on this, but, so is the $7,110 coming out of the general fund to pay for that? And not out of the HERF?
It is coming out of the HERF fund, however, the HERF fund, and these are numbers off the top of my head, it's, we spend $5 million on street activity that qualifies for HERF, but we only get $3 million in HERF funds. So $2 million is taken at the end of the year, and is budgeted to be transferred from the general fund into HERF. So any incremental change we make to the HERF fund really is ultimately changing that transfer from the general fund. It's either going to transfer, you know, more general funds in, or less general funds in.
So theoretically, just to make sure I understand this correctly, at the end of the year, assuming no other transfers occur in that HERF scenario, instead of transferring $2 million from the general fund to HERF, we would be transferring $2,7110, is that how I'm reading that?
That's, that is correct. And that $7,110 is in the general fund beginning balance this year, because we didn't spend it last year, so we didn't have to transfer it to HERF last year.
So it came into the budget this year on the revenue side as one-time money? I get it. I'm just wondering if there's not a simpler way to say that, because aren't you really taking it out of the one-time? No, it's technically coming out of the general fund, I guess I'm making it too complicated. All right, thanks.
Go ahead.
Then, I wanted to talk a little bit, as I believe all of you know, Sheila Mills, our CFD administrator, is retiring after 22 years with the City of Goodyear.
A big loss, too.
And it is a big loss. Because Sheila's been with us for 22 years, because Sheila's not the kind of person that would abuse her sick leave, and because Sheila also is a person that didn't enjoy taking vacation and was always fighting the cap, we're going to be paying Sheila of leave entitlements over 900 hours, in other words, pretty much through the rest of the fiscal year. But we have an obligation to the CFDs to provide certain services. Because we're paying for, for that service, what I thought would be more appropriate is to, rather than try a budget transfer, I thought the most appropriate thing is to say, okay, we're not going to charge the CFDs for, for the next six months, we're instead, we've got to have administrative services. And so, what we're doing is hiring a firm, actually several people coming through one firm, to help us administer these CFDs until we refill the position. Be at least three months, but I really wanted to allow it to go the whole year, so I estimated it at $100,000. What I'm asking to do, asking is more that you endorse that strategy, it's probably something we could have done as a staff, without any action, but I feel more comfortable just being transparent and telling you, this is the transaction we're doing, how we're going to structure it. It's, this, I hope we never do, very unique type of budget transfer that we wouldn't normally do, but because of those circumstances, where the city provides the service and bills the CFD for the services, here, the third party that we're hiring, we're going to pay that third party directly for those services, and that's why we're going about it this way.
Councilman Vazillo?
I just want to make sure I understand it, when you cut a check to the consultants, is that going to be charged to the general fund?
No, the check to the consultant will be charged to the CFDs. That's why we don't have the money in the CFDs to reimburse the general fund during that timeframe.
Okay, so at the end of the period, okay, so you're going to charge the CFD, how are you going to get the money back from the CFD?
Not going, we're, I'm charging the, the bill will be paid out of the CFD...
Okay, all right.
For the consultant. The problem is, is when I pay that consultant, I don't have the money to also pay our gen, the city. So I'm reducing the amount, our estimate normally is 400,000 a year, we're reducing that amount by $100,000 that we expect the city to, to get from the CFD, so that we can pay the consultant.
Okay, now, just follow the next step further, technically, we're 100,000 light as a result of that.
Yes.
Right? Next budget year, will we recoup that 100,000 from the CFD?
On an annual basis, it'll go back up to the 400,000, yes.
But we're still at the 100?
Yeah, the 100, we will still be, yes.
We can't make it 500 the following year because of...
The property tax base for the CFDs would not support that.
Okay, all right, so we're just at 100, okay.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
Okay, so, what we're asking for tonight is to approve the October and November budget transfers, and endorse, or, as worded on there, authorize the revenue reduction from the CFDs. Those are the two actions we're, we're asking the city council this evening.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so let's start out, can I have a motion in a second, to approve the October and November 2015 budget transfers?
So moved.
Second. Councilman Stiff made the motion.
No, it was me.
Oh, was you?
It was the other Stiff.
I can't tell the difference from you and Lori's. Councilman Vazillo made the motion, and Vice Mayor Loretano, the second. Any other council discussion? All right, let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number two, can I have a motion a second, to authorize the reduction of the revenue estimates in the amount not to exceed $100,000 from the CFD, to facilitate hiring consultants to provide administrative services for CFDs? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard it from, motion from Councilman Vazillo this time, and second from Councilman Stiff. You spoke a little louder, Councilman Stiff. Open for council discussion?
Question?
Yes, Councilman Osborne.
Okay, just so, I, I'm not 100% understanding this one, so, will we need to have a CFD meeting to then change this, to vote upon it within the CFD? I guess I'm not, I mean, I'm seeing it on one side, I'm not seeing it on the other side, so...
That's a very good question. Historically, we have not adjusted the budgets, the, the budgets in the CFD are such, at such a high level, that that adjustment wouldn't have to be made. Instead of it paying the general fund, it'll just show the consulting service, so we will not bring that back for a special CFD adjustment.
Okay.
Very good question.
Isn't technically... Isn't technically, because I, you know, I, I understand that this is not the norm. Isn't technically Sheila's, the City of Goodyear employee, not the CFD's employee?
No, specifically even, not even technically.
Right.
She is a City of Goodyear general fund paid employee.
Correct.
Yes.
So, so really, that, that fee is, is on our shoulders, not on the CFD's shoulders, because they're just paying.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just making sure I have it right, so, okay.
Okay, all right, so let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, now.
Okay.
Okay, so staff will now present the October 2015. Am I there, is that not? That's not there. Okay, all right, thank you. So that ends the meeting, so let's turn it over to council for any comments, accommodation reports, or current events. Counselor Osborne, I'm putting you first tonight.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to wish everyone who is out here in staff and, and citizens, Christmas greetings and, and a Happy New Year, since we'll see you in January. But also, I'm going to have to say, this is, I know technically not what I'm allowed to do, but as a business owner, I want to thank the staff, because I, I appreciate everything that our staff has done, because I think just about every department has probably touched my project in some way. So please, directors, give my thanks to your staff. I, I really appreciate everything that's happened in the city for all of our businesses. And, and now that I've, I've seen it firsthand, I really thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, no, well, I, I just wanted to mention, we went to a groundbreaking, I think that was pretty spectacular, so we just want to mention it to the public if they weren't there. And I don't know if the public's listening to us tonight, this hour, but I'm going to take a chance on that. It was really rewarding and long awaited for, so I, I'm excited about that, so. And let me see, and of course, we went to a ribbon cutting for the Osborne Jewry, new jewelry store, and it was marvelous, and so that was, that was exciting. And then Christmas in the park. Carrie, you were there. Who else was there? We, oh, and you were there with your, Counselor Osborne had her grandchild there. So it was really good that the, that the Goodyear mayor showed up, because the Litchfield mayor was sick, so, so I couldn't get over it. I've got so many claps and yays coming out, and I finally figured at the end, well, it was because I was the only mayor that showed up, and that.
No, Ken Rice was there, Avondale was there, Ken was there.
Was Ken there?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess he was. Well, I don't know, should we ask him if he got that much applause?
He was, he was behind me.
Did he get a lot of applause?
He was behind me. No, I think I was getting the applause.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's not as pretty as you, Georgia.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Mayor, members of the council, I just have one item, it was mentioned that Sheila Mills is retiring 22 years, and, and she actually served in several roles throughout her career here, but we are doing a celebration. Council's certainly invited to that if you're available. And that is going to be down in the finance department area, and that will be on Thursday, December 17th, 2:30 to 4:00. And that will, so that's just a way of just dropping in, saying hi, nothing formal, but we, if you have the time to recognize, that would be appreciated. Other than that, I would agree, it's, it's been a great year. We will be back with council on January the 4th for a council retreat. There will be no other action that night. That'll be from 4:30 to 8:30, and that's the next time we get to see you. So from management and staff to the mayor and council, happy holidays and a great Christmas season as well.
You're so, okay, and to the staff, I hope you have a great vacation. I know it gets tedious at these council meetings, and I'm watching all your faces, and you've worked all day long and you're here into the late evening, and so I just want to thank you for all your service, and I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we look forward to seeing you back next year, because next year is going to be an exciting year. And I think there's going to be a lot of different progress in different areas, and I'm just excited to come back as a mayor for the 2016, so thank you. And I don't think there's any staff follow-up actions tonight. Was there one? Okay, Counselor Stip, remind me.
Yeah, during the work session, we talked about getting success measurements on that pilot program.
Correct, yes, during the work session, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we got that taken. Council, we've taken a short break, as the city manager said, during the holidays. The next meeting will be part two of the city council's retreat. It will be held on January 4th at 4:30, and there will be a work session and a regular meeting on January 11th, beginning at 5:00. So with no further business, this meeting's adjourned.
Don't we have a special meeting?
Oh, and now, yes, thank you, Joanne.
I mean, we could go.
And now, thank you, Joanne.